Okay, let's see. It is now six o'clock. And we appear to have a quorum. Mary, can you confirm that for us?
Ms. Escobedo? Linda?
Hi.
Mr. Howell?
Hi.
Ms. Ackerman?
Hi.
Mr. Dane?
Present.
Myself, present.
Okay, so we will start the period of public comment. Do we have anybody who would like to comment at this point? No hands raised, no commentary? Well, I will proceed to the consent agenda. Mary, would you like to?
Should we ask if anybody has any issues with anything on the consent agenda before I move?
Well, I'm going to vote for it, but I have one comment. So do you want me to say that before we vote for it or after?
Well, if you-
I'm gonna vote for it. I just-
Well, say it. Maybe it'll influence the rest of us.
Okay, well, in the memos we got, we were reminded that, well, you know, that the town accountant and the town treasurer are doing an excellent job, and we thank them for continuing to be interim and to be appointed again. But we're reminded in this memo that we are supposed to have from the town accountant quarterly reports. And we may have changed that to semi-annual, but in any case, we haven't had one in over a year. So I really want to remind the board that we need to have the town accountant come in soon and give us an update.
What's the content of the update?
I'm just looking at the memo we got.
Yeah.
It could be fiscal year close, required reports to the state, like Schedule A and tax recap.
And I'm happy to talk about that for a minute since we-
Sure.
Since we have a minute and didn't have any public comment and-
We've saved some time on public comments, so we might have some of our own comments.
Sure. And also by way of introduction, in the audience, Mary Barrett, our town accountant, is here. I'm not sure.
Hi.
I know you've all interacted with her, at least by email, if not in person before. Mary's been with the town for more than 10 years, probably at this point, 13, and how many years as town accountant?
Almost nine.
Almost nine, okay. And so the town accountant is a position that is appointed by the select board, and I think that's important for the select board to know, because unlike all of the other positions in town that are appointed by the town manager, this position is appointed by the select board. And I like to liken the town accountant's position to that of an internal auditor. So on an annual basis, we have an external auditing firm that comes in and looks at our books and does all kinds of reviews and prepares a report. But during the course of the year, it's the town accountant who serves as the internal auditor and who is making sure that the town manager and the CFO are adhering to the budget and that we are spending money in lawful ways and following procurement when that is required. So because the town accountant is appointed by the select board, there should be some process by which you hear directly from the town accountant on a regular basis. We've never really established a great pattern here, or we're yet to establish a great pattern here in Concord of what that frequency is. And I suggested that probably a good starting point would be quarterly reports, not necessarily that she would have to come in on a quarterly basis, but you probably at least twice a year would like to have the town accountant come in, but on a quarterly basis have a written report that you could refer to. And then I included some other things that you might want to consider. None of these things have been set in stone yet, so it's not that we haven't been doing, or the town accountant hasn't been doing something that the select board has asked. But these are just some ideas of things that you might want to identify as points of interest for the board.
What is the magnitude of the report you're referring to? Are you talking about one-page profit and loss? Or are you talking about something like 25 pages that an accountant would prepare with footnotes and all that stuff?
Yeah.
What is the, what's the extent of it?
So I would say on a quarterly basis, probably a report that is a couple of pages, that there certainly could be more detail if anybody was interested in looking at, but it would be looking at both revenue and expense year-to-date and flagging anything that looks like it's out of place. For instance, if there are expenditures that are far exceeding budget, making notes about why that is occurring, or or putting on your radar if there's something that that looks like it's a problem such as legal expense. You know, if that is running high, that's something that the town accountant might flag for you. And then on the revenue side, just talking about how revenues look year-to-date and identifying why things are higher or low or different than they have been in prior years. But it could be as simple as that. It's really a budget report. And then maybe talking about progress for close of the fiscal year, or how the audit is running, or what the timetable is, or you know, what are the next reports that are due to the state, and when when are those due, that type of thing.
I think it would be really valuable to me to see how our expense is running based on what we budgeted and how revenue is coming in based on-
Right, particularly this year, because we really are going to start to feel the need to tighten up. And I remember, Carrie, that you suggested this a while ago, and we did have Mary come in once, and it was good. I think it would be really useful to continue.
And so the appointment of the town accountant under state law is for a term of at least three years. It can be as many as five years. It can't exceed five years. So the recommendation and our practice here has been a three-year appointment, and Mary's last term, I think, ended May 31st of 2023, but we wanted to get that back to a fiscal year basis. I'm not sure if it was always off-cycle.
Yeah, I think it's always been something the practice here in Concord, if May 31st was named for three appointments.
No, they're on here.
Town manager appointments.
So this one, it makes more sense for it to be concurrent with the fiscal year. And so we would be looking for a three-year term extending through June 30, 2026.
Well, is there such a report that exists for the end of the last fiscal year, the June 30 fiscal year? That we might be able to have a look at as a sample?
So we could, as soon as that's prepared. We're still working on the close. Yeah, so our close is not like a private sector close. It is a process that takes several months, mostly because of grant activity. We need to account for grant activity that can occur for weeks and months after the fiscal year closes. So it's not ready at this point, but I think that would be probably the best starting point is when that June 30 report is ready to have that the the next time that Mary would come in and present to you.
And that would be what, in a month or two?
Do you think it would be?
End of September, October, maybe?
Where?
October.
October?
Yeah.
Should we have to wait?
Do you want to?
We can account for revenue from our grants up to September 30th. So we can recognize those revenues in the current year. So we have a number of grants that are reimbursable grants. So we incur the expense first and then get the money later. So we have until September 30th to count for any monies that come in for that time and bring it back into the prior fiscal year.
So maybe your first meeting in October?
But does that mean that that lag between the the time of the actual transactions and the time of the report is always going to be several months? So that that makes it really hard to deal with budgets, doesn't it? Whether you know you're spending under or over budget, or whether income is under or over budget if you don't find out about it for four months?
Yeah, so that's not the case. On any given day, any department manager, myself included, can go into the financial software and see where we stand. So we're not waiting.
It depends on whether you want the report to be essentially auditable and really complete based on actual transactions versus the projections. It seems to me that it might make sense to talk a little bit more specifically with the accountant about things like the status of the internal controls and the processes that are related to accounting. I'm a little uncomfortable with the idea of getting into the budgeting side, because, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't that really what we look to the the chief financial officer to to run in conjunction with the departments? So I recognize that the accountant is providing extremely important functions that have to do with how the departments are operating, but I think we should try to make sure that we don't confuse what those roles are.
That is a good point. And I think once you get into a pattern of meeting with the town accountant, you'll know what types of information you're looking for. And certainly the CFO or myself can talk to you at any point about budget. But the town accountant is the independent voice and the, you know, a part of the internal controls for this board and for the public to know that, you know, that we have a system of checks and balances.
Good. Well, and it's more than we've had in recent times.
Well, it's not that we haven't had it. We just have not had any regular public review. The select board has not had any regular public review of this. You're just hearing from either from myself or the finance director.
I think Carrie's point is that the select board hasn't really paid that much attention to it, but I can tell you from experience that the role of the town accountant is well-understood and adhered to within the departments.
And we're happy.
Yeah, but we're the select board.
Right, yeah. So what I'm trying to say is, I don't anticipate we'd be looking at, we might be raising the visibility of some things that have been going on anyway.
I think we're just going to get a very high level. We're not going to get into all kinds of budgeting details. We're going to get a very general idea. I think we were just starting to get into it last time when Mary presented, and I agree with Carrie. Let's put this on a regular basis so that when you're talking about the scope of it, Henry, I think it might be, for example, a 10-minute item once a quarter or twice a year, maybe 15 minutes. It's not a huge micromanaging exercise by the select board.
And I think if there are certain things that you want to flag, you would likely send those over to the Financial Audit Advisory Committee to take a deeper dive into it. This board wouldn't necessarily be looking to do that, but you might help identify issues that you would like that group to look at.
Right, and like, for example, coming up this year, we're going to have some changes to the budget that because of the last minute, right? So it would be a good opportunity to get a quick overview of how things are looking with that.
Okay, so this is, can we now move the-
Yes, move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Ms. Escobedo?
Hi.
Mr. Howell?
Hi.
Ms. Ackerman?
Hi.
Mr. Dane?
Hi.
And myself, Mary Hartman?
Hi.
Thank you.
So before you move on, could I take this opportunity to introduce Colleen Reinhardt, who is our deputy treasurer-collector and as of the end of the month will be our interim treasurer-collector. Colleen's been with us probably going on 10 years at this point too, right? So, and Colleen has been the deputy treasurer-collector for three?
Year and a half.
A year and a half. I can't keep track of anything, but has been been in the treasurer-collector's office for a long time, has been the backbone in that office. Deputy treasurer-collector, as she says, for a year and a half, and this will be her second time serving as as the interim treasurer-collector. And this is needed because when we are without a permanent chief financial chief financial officer, we don't want to have an interim person serving as the treasurer of the organization, just because of the sensitive nature of the duties associated with that job. So the last time around, when we had an interim CFO, I came to you and asked that you appoint Colleen to serve as the interim treasurer-collector, and she did that for a period of months, I think from probably February to September of 2022, before Gail Dowd was appointed as our regular CFO, and then she assumed the duties of treasurer-collector as well. So that's the route that we're going this time.
So I see that this expires October 31st this year, so we're hoping to have a permanent position by then?
Yes, and if not, then I would come back to you to extend that interim appointment.
And point of order, is this part of the 620 committee appointments?
Yes.
Okay, so I was wrong. It wasn't in the consent agenda.
Okay, we'll do it now.
I just don't see it in the motions, so. Yeah, yeah, great. Okay, great.
Shall I read the-
Oh, so I was-
Committee appointments?
Sure, please.
Okay. Move to appoint Holly Legault with Galt of 242 Monson Road for a term to expire May 31st, 2026, to the Public Ceremonies and Celebration Committee. Move to- Did we nominate her last?
They were nominated. She was.
Thank you. Move to appoint Dean Banfield of 73 Walden Terrace, Stephen Newbold of 124 Hillcrest Road, Charles Parker of 105 Chestnut Street, Wendy Raveli of 42 Bow Street, and Philip Villers of 20 Witsend Road for a term to expire April 30th, 2024, or at the completion of their work to the Solar Implementation Task Force. Move to appoint Stu Beck of 190 Prairie Street to the West Concord Junction Cultural District Committee for a term to expire May 31st, 2026. Move to appoint James Vehi of 1544 Main Street to complete an unexpired term to expire on May 31st, 2025. Pamela Wrestler of 15 Partridge Lane to complete an unexpired term to expire May 31st, 2026. And Dee Clark of 28 Concord Green, Unit 3, as an associate member for a term to expire May 31st, 2026, to the Library Committee. Move to appoint Mary Barrett as town accountant for a term to expire May 31st, 2026. Move to appoint Colleen Reinhardt? Reinhardt, thank you, as the interim town treasurer-collector for a term to expire October 31st, 2023. Second. Ms. Escobedo?
Hi.
Mr. Howell?
Hi.
Ms. Ackerman?
Hi.
Mr. Dane?
Hi.
And myself, Mary Hartman?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any liaison reports from town managers? I skipped town managers.
Okay, thank you, and good evening. Referring to the report of June 30, 2023, I wanted to note that we have an interim senior services director, Eileen Bogle, who is serving in this capacity after the resignation of Lauren Beretta. Eileen is actually a retired COA director. She was with the town of Weston for a number of years, and in her retirement, she's recently served as the interim director for the Northborough Senior Center. She started with us last week, and she is here on a pretty healthy part-time basis, so I think she'll be in probably four days a week while we recruit for our next senior services director. I will be meeting next week with the COA board to talk to them about recruitment for the next director. I would like to note that we did both open and close the BD Center last week. We finally were able to get all four of the pools. Their combined chlorine levels within acceptable levels for the period of time needed to reopen those pools. We had the pools functioning well, and I think we were open for a day before. We had an issue with the boiler that caused the center to be closed. But we have since, we're able to bring a vendor in, identify the problem. The problem has been fixed. We understand how to maintain the issue going forward so that we don't experience this problem again. But it definitely was a significant issue that we had last week, but fortunately the building was able to be evacuated and there weren't any issues.
So it's open again now?
It is open again.
It closed yesterday, too.
Now I'm losing track of days, so it was closed back open today then, probably for the first time.
It was closed because of the fire. The mailbox.
So I did also want to mention, we did have somewhat of a, what felt like a very crazy day yesterday. We did issue a news release on behalf of both Police Chief Mulcahy and Fire Chief Judge, and I'll just refer to this because I think it's important for the community to understand what was going on yesterday. So on Sunday, July 9th, at approximately noon, Concord Fire, Police and Fire received reports of a fire occurring at the BD Swim Center, 498 Walden Street. Upon arrival, crews located two fires, one of which was behind the swim center and the other was located in the front of the center. There were no reported injuries. So we actually received a report of mail inside of the mailbox that was lit on fire. At approximately 12:30 PM, Police and Fire received another report of a fire at the US Post Office located at 34 Walden Street. There were no reported injuries. The issue there was a fire that was set in the dumpster behind the building. At approximately 1 PM, a fourth fire was reported at a shed located on National Park property at 955 Lexington Road. There were no reported injuries, but there was a structure fire. At the time that this news release was issued, the cause of the fires had been deemed suspicious and were under investigation by Concord Police with the assistance of the National Park Service, the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms and Explosives, the Massachusetts State Police, and the State Police Fire and Explosion Investigation Unit attached to the State Fire Marshal's Office. Investigating parties had identified a person of interest. Additionally, items that were responsible, possibly related to other incidents, were located outside of the district courthouse. All incidents remain under investigation. I can tell you, as of late yesterday, there was a suspect that had been placed in custody, and they do believe that they have the person responsible for the fires yesterday. So it was a it was a rather crazy and concerning day at times during the day because we had other incidences going on. We had a lot of mutual aid in town. We had just great teamwork, police, fire, our technology, chief technology officer was involved, was in reviewing. We had video footage, and that's how they were able to determine who the suspect was, and our recreation staff was very involved yesterday. It was a difficult day for everybody. But ended on a positive note in that the the likely suspect had been apprehended and detained and will be charged by the state Fire Marshal's Office for the different incidences. To end on a happy note, we have some great activities on Thursday, July 13th through Sunday, July 16th, called Glory for George, Freedom Unfinished. We have a series of events honoring Concord's native son, George Washington Dugan, on the 160th anniversary of his heroic sacrifice with the Massachusetts 54th, the first all-black regiment of the Civil War. We have, you probably have seen the great poster. We've got some speakers. We have a screening of the movie Glory and some tours and really nice, hopefully we'll have some great weather later this week through the weekend so that we can have great participation at this first-ever event, again honoring George Washington Dugan. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Okay. Liaison records.
Now we have-
Liaison records.
Yes. You have one?
Yeah, I do.
Shall I go first?
Yes. We start at my left.
Okay, good. So the first thing is the Trails Committee, the chair of the Trails Committee, Bob White, is doing some work on rifle range where he's excavating and trying to restore some of the target practice apparatus that was on that rifle range. It's quite a project. A lot of people are involved. It's making that a much more interesting trail. The other thing is I attended a , oh, a symposium, I guess, sponsored by the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority, and it was a very, very preliminary discussion about the communities in Metro West joining the MWRA as a source of water, since we all know that the federal government has released guidelines that only allow very, very, very small quantities of the forever chemicals within our drinking water, and to do that locally might be very expensive. So I'd have to really give credit to Carrie, to Alan Cathcart, to Jeff Morawski for actually thinking ahead as to what are our alternatives to supply safe drinking water to the town of Concord. The presentation they gave basically outlined a multi-year project and a multimillion-dollar project that's going to require a lot of cooperation among the Metro West community. So I'm glad that the town of Concord is actually showing some leadership there, and it's something we should take seriously because it is our drinking water, after all. The other thing is I attended the kickoff meeting for the MBTA Communities Act. I think that went well. It was well-attended. We had some very good presentations by the consultants. We had some interesting questions from the audience. I guess my opinion would be going forward, how do we make this simple enough so that people understand it, but without minimizing the complexity and and also helping people understand what choices we have and what choices are basically dictated to us by the law. But I thought we got off to a good start, and there are many, many more community discussions that are on the calendar. And then finally, I went to the Novo Riverside Commons, the 40B development. They had a site visit over at the property off of Baker Ave. That again was well-attended. The DPW was there, the Blue were there, Fire was there, CMLP was not there. There were a lot of committee members there, a few residents. It was hosted by Mass Housing, and they entertained a few questions, but we were cautioned that this was not really a time for Q and A, and we will have more opportunity for that going forward. One thing that did come out of that, though, Henry, and I want to mention this, is I came away being confused about what's the role of the select board with this 40B development. So I'm hoping we can talk about that sometime.
Well, that may be up to us, but the primary responsibility there is the planning and zoning people.
Right.
And the comprehensive permit goes, application goes to the zoning board of appeal. And, and the comprehensive permit goes, application goes to the zoning board of appeals. Um, but I think our zoning board of appeals, uh, the members on that board and maybe even our planning staff may never have done a 40B project. And therefore I think there's a lot of education that needs to be done in order for them to understand what the parameters are of approval and disapproval. And there was a recent decision by the um, Bureau of Housing Appeals that came down just last week on some of the things that can and cannot be considered in um, approving a 40B uh, application. Um, so um.
I think my, my question is very specific, which is what is our role? I, I understand, I understand.
Our, our, I think a part of our role is to make sure that um, our boards are well-educated on what, how to handle this. And also to the extent that concessions or um, or, or concessions are required uh, by the developer, um, I think we play an important role in deciding what, what we can offer and what we should offer in order to expedite or to um, facilitate the project going forward.
But is, is, again, I'm confused. Isn't that the role of the ZBA?
Well, they don't have the authority to, they, they have the authority to merely approve or disapprove or to condition. But if, for instance, give you an example, I understand that one of the things that they're asking for is a waiver of the sewer improvement fee. Um, that is something probably in which we will have to weigh in on because it really involves essentially a transfer of funds within the.
I understand. I, I guess I'm wondering if we could, perhaps, it might be a good idea to have that on a future agenda?
Yeah.
Where we talk about what's, what's our role um, so that we do our job and we don't do the other board's jobs and we don't do the staff's jobs. Um, I would, I would really appreciate that.
I would too. And I think um, maybe Megan and Carrie both look like they wanted to speak on this.
They do.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Um, one of the roles of the Select Board is to collect comments from the town regarding this project. And so that is not necessarily members of the public. Members of the public can comment during the public hearing process through the zoning board of appeals. But what we're, what I um, am working on currently is working with town staff to understand um, if there are any issues with the project or concerns that are in the realm of what we can comment on. For example, um, turning radius for fire access and, and that kind of thing. So we're having an internal staff meeting like we do with other projects to talk about the plans and see what issues come up. And so we'll be collecting staff comments on the project. And also um, boards and committees can, can weigh in as well. So the staff that we are working with um, to do this review will convey to the boards and committees that they work with. For example, the Public Works Commission um, and others, the, the types of comments that would be acceptable. Um, so I think, Henry, you make a good point about what, what kind of thing can we comment on and what can't we comment on? So we, that, that is an important distinction that we will be um, kind of going over in an internal town staff process so that the comments that we present to you for submittal will be appropriate in line with what's accepted.
So that's, I think that's part of the, the process is for the application to be circulated to all, almost all of the town departments such as, you know, Public Works, Fire, et cetera, et cetera. Board of Health, you name it, for them, which is for them to submit a letter, in most cases, a letter of comment to the zoning board of appeals to be considered in connection with the um, approval of the uh, of the comprehensive permit. Which in a comprehensive permit, that name implies that it's one-stop shopping.
Mm-hmm.
So that the um, they don't have to go to the planning board, the natural resources commission, et cetera, et cetera, and get a whole bunch of separate permits. The I, the object is to have a single hearing for, on all of the permits that are required. Um, but as this last case stated, that the, the Board of Appeals does not, may not consider state and local requirements such as um, water, sewer and so on, which are not, not zoning issues and are nevertheless something that have to be complied with, but are not part of this, of the comprehensive permit process.
Um, can I make a comment? I also heard Megan say that we collect comments from other committees. Did I hear you say that?
From the public about concerns?
Not, no, not the, I heard not the.
Yeah, I, it's my understanding that it's um, town staff and committees.
And committees. And the public gives comments at the ZBA hearings. Okay, so um, Henry, maybe we should announce that at the Chair's Breakfast, that committees can funnel comments through us?
That would be very appropriate because they were, I think about the first group of people to find out that that application had been filed. And there will be a Chair's Breakfast, um, I think it's at the 19th, it's just uh, shortly, next week? At eight o'clock in the morning, as I recall.
So Mary, thanks for bringing this up. I think as I'm listening to this, um, I'm learning a lot just listening to this. I think it would be really useful to have it on our agenda and to um, hear the timetable, for example. Like when do we expect the 40B application to come in? What, what is our role? When do we weigh in if there's concessions and sewer fee? And, and you know, to hear more detail and a timetable would be really useful.
Well, if you look in our package, I believe today, today's package, we do have the timetable.
Okay.
Um, at least starting from the moment of application, the, the, the um, you know, the, the milestones um, in the, in the whole process. So I think I did put a fair amount of information in the, in, in, in the packet for today about um.
Right.
That was.
Okay.
Yes.
So you're saying that you don't think we should discuss this for a few minutes on a future agenda?
I think we do, but I think I want to, I want, I would like, want to think about who we would want to have come and present.
Right.
To us and what it is we want to discuss. Um, so we have a clear idea of what we're doing.
Right.
I thought August 8th was the deadline for our comments. August 8th is the deadline. Yeah. So it has to be pretty soon.
Very soon.
July 26th.
Next week, next, next meeting.
July 20th.
Next meeting.
24th, 24th.
So July 24th, we have an agenda item.
Now, we have not, I mean, I have, I don't think all the members of the board have seen the complete application.
No.
It is available online. It is online and it's quite a package, as you would expect. Um, so if we're going to discuss it, next, next, uh, on our next meeting on the 24th, they could, and we're, and if we're going to have comments on it, I think everybody should review.
No, but we're not making comments. I thought we were just collecting other people's comments. Or are we making our own? This is where I need clarification. So I, I'm of the, I thought we were collecting other people's comments and maybe I'm, maybe I'm wrong about that. Maybe we're supposed to have our own comment.
If you have comments that are within the scope of what you can comment on?
Yep.
Then you can make them. So I, it sounds like there needs to be more of an education about what that is exactly.
Exactly.
That's right. Like for example, if, is this going to be already the time to talk about um, concessions? Already on July 24th? Are we already talking about the sewer? It seems like, I, I thought that was going to come later.
Doesn't make any sense to me to do that.
Right.
I mean.
But we have to comment by August 8th?
Well.
So.
Those comments might be based on the application. It seems to me that if the applicant has requests or conditions under which they want to go forward or not, it's up, it's on them to come to us. We don't need to be.
Yes.
Preemptively offering.
Hmm.
I think that's. No, but if it's, i- is that already in the application that they want to waive the sewer fee?
So we're spending a lot of time talking about something that is not on the agenda.
That's right. That's right.
Yep. Good point. So let's put it on the agenda.
Yeah, so we're, we're meeting to- tomorrow to talk about the agenda for the 24th. And um, yeah, I think.
And we might consider actually a- asking someone, a representative of the developer to come and talk to us.
Okay, we can talk about that tomorrow, about whether or not that, that makes sense.
Alright, okay.
The learning for me though on this is if that's the kind of timeframe that we're talking about, from whenever this application was filed to August 8th, we probably should have, as soon as the application was filed, we should have been putting it on our agenda.
Right.
Right. Because we, at least half of that window is gone already.
Well, I can't, I can't believe that uh, I can't, I don't know what procedurally, what procedural deadline that, that actually would have been.
Yeah.
And that are, any comments we would have at any point along the way would be foreclosed.
Right. I, I, I agree. I just, it just seems to me that in the future, should an application of this kind appear, the circulation of that application in some kind of timeline for, for comments needs to be developed almost immediately. And I don't think we did that. And I think your, your earlier comment, Henry, was exactly right. We haven't seen these before.
Right.
And so we're all learning.
We're all learning. Yep.
Okay.
I believe the application was filed on.
About a month ago because, no?
Not, not a month ago. It was perhaps on the 26th? June, it was, it was June 26th or, or just the week. Prior. I mean, this, this has all happened very, very fast. We, we've known that we've been waiting for the application, but it was just, it was filed very recently. And again, new, new for us, it's been 10 plus years since the town has looked at a 40B application. So.
So since time is short, um, I would ask that we do focus on, um, what Mary said. What is the Select Board's role? You know, that should be our agenda item. What do we have to do and when um, is what, is what we need to learn? So that'll help us prepare for the meeting instead of reading hundreds of pages that don't apply to us.
So, okay, those are my liaisons.
That's a lot. I forgot what is it?
Yeah, what are we doing?
Doing, yes. Do we have any other liaisons? I, I mean, I, I think that we do have an important role to play in this in the, in the respect, that there are certain aspects of this that involve negotiation over give and take with regard to the project. And there are certain aspects that relate to um, having the Board of Appeals being well-informed on what their, what their, what their authority is and what their responsibility is in dealing with something that they've never seen before. And I think we ought to make sure that they are, that we make available such as the resources of town council as necessary to educate them on the process. Um, uh, because it's not something they should go into blind.
Do we want to invite them to our meeting on the 24th? Um, some members of the zoning board or planning board?
Well, let, we'll talk about that tomorrow.
Okay.
Who's the liaison to the ZBA? Who is our liaison?
I am, Linda.
Thank you, Linda. Okay.
Okay. So any other liaison, uh, do we have any other liaison?
I have one.
Yes, I, I would like to go next if I may.
Okay, Linda, go for it.
Yeah, thank you. Um, uh, first of all, I'm glad to hear that this is going to go on the next agenda because I too asked for this to go on the uh, future agenda. Um, I attended the 40B um, site visit and I want to thank um, Megan Samudo and um, Fire Chief Judge for making my site visit possible that day. Um, I, I really felt strongly that it was important to be there from the beginning to hear what was happening with this. Um, related to 40B, I, I did recently attend um, the Concord Housing Authority's meeting. And they already, um, and they had a member who attended that site visit as well. And they raised the question um, for their board about um, what impact this might have on them renting their, their units and, and just um, uh, having alternatives for uh, clients to go to another site. So I just want to put that on people's radar. Um, the CHA as well as the recent um, meeting of the trust, the Affordable Housing Trust, um, are both looking forward to the hopefully upcoming roundtable meeting where priorities for existing housing funds will be discussed amongst the groups. And um, I would.
Linda, is there a date for that?
Um, if it was just said, I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me right now. Uh, I know they've been w- working to try to schedule that. If it's been, I'll, I'll get it too.
Thanks.
And that completes my liaison reports. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so I also went to the MBTA Communities um, Zoom webinar and I learned a lot. I thought it was really useful. Um, in fact, I will say, um, I was with my grandkids and my 12-year-old grandson really wanted to watch the meeting and I thought he'd last five minutes. He was fascinated and every time he kept saying, well, zoning, what's that? And then the next slide was, what is zoning? And every time he asked a question, the next slide, it was just like set up really well um, for a person to follow along. So it was really interesting. Um, and um, the 2229 Main Street Task Force has really been uh, working hard. They've um, divided into four subcommittees. Legal, reuse, safety and risk, and operation and economic analysis. And um, there will be, if we decide to acquire the site, there will be some pre-acquisition costs that the town will have to front. Maybe we can be funded by grants, um, continuing tag grants. Um, maybe we can be reimbursed somehow. Um, for example, one of the costs is going to be some legal analysis. And we're waiting for um, a legal work report to come from town council uh, to talk about this work plan. And then town council is going to meet with the Select Board at a future meeting. Um, to figure out some detail about that. And then finally, um, the Transportation Committee is actively looking for two new members. We um, especially are looking for some diversity. We'd like to get some younger people, some female, some um, people in the disabled community and people with experience in engineering or design. And the comprehensive transportation study has been out to bid and the award will be coming very soon. Um, it will develop criteria to prioritize um, project infrastructure. Um, and identify the low-hanging fruit and figure out what we can do first, second, third, and we, you know, what are our priorities town-wide? So that's it for my report.
And just quickly on the Recreation Commission, um, obviously their last meeting was dominated by the BD Center, which was not yet ready to reopen at that time. But um, it was very interesting. They're paying close attention to the costs and the, and the budget position of BD as well. Um, and fortunately, it, there's some optimism, some reason for some optimism on that despite the uh, despite all the issues, the uh, clientele seems to be really sticking it out and, and that's, I know, very much appreciated. And the staff is working very hard on it. I did want to mention that they're, that they are working on a recreation facility strategic plan and have some uh, some plans for an, an open forum on July 20th. So an opportunity for people, um, I think in conjunction with the Outdoor Bean Town Swing Concert, which um, should be an event coming up next week and an opportunity to, to, for people to provide input uh, into that. into that into that strategic plan. Um, also, the Middle School Building Committee met since we last met, and um, things are on track, construction has started, um, they're providing some windows for people that want to watch through the fence, especially I I hear there's a lot of big trucks that are very attractive to small children um, moving things around, so it's really beginning to look like a construction site. And um, the the routine and hopefully uh, consistent progress of of actual construction is taking place now. So those were the two things that I would just wanted to highlight since our last meeting.
Okay. Um, the only thing I have to report on is the fact that the the attempt at reviving the picnic in the park this year under private auspices um, was frustrated by a heavy rainfall, but um, with the assistance of some um, uh, survival instincts and ingenuity, they moved at least the entertainment features into 51 Walden Street, and there were three different concert groups uh, that performed. And I think it was a pretty good crowd that came came in, and a lot of ways, it was the entertainment was much better in that venue than it would have been out in the um, out in the uh, out in the um, Emerson Field. Um, I did, um, I I did get a request from the organizers who said that it had been privately funded for for many years, and that the uh, their uh, financial reserves are running down. And there there was some interest in having the picnic in the park perhaps be part of the activities that were um, sponsored by the Recreation Department. So uh.
Uh, I will say that 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 question was actually discussed at the last commission meeting. And the concern there is is a staffing concern. Um, it, that particular event hits just after the ramp up of the summer camp program, which is actually the most highly attended now since COVID happened and and almost back to to pre-levels, and so their Recreation Department's really running flat out at that point in time, and um, it's sort of the one holiday they get between the beginning of camp and the end of the summer, so um, I think we'd have to think very carefully before asking Recreation to take that on.
Hmm, well, I just just bring it before you for uh, information or consideration, and to let you know that that's that it may not continue uh, if if somebody doesn't pick it up.
Yeah.
So uh, is that?
Um, Henry, are we going to get an update soon from the 250th on um, event timetables and budgets?
I think we've already had one, but now we are getting into a uh, we've gone through a major reorganization in the last couple of weeks to um, professionalize the uh, the portion of the activity that is involved in the parades for the 2024 and 25. Um, and so um, we've um, um, but we still, I mean, so that the function will now be more, the 2025 Committee will be much more involved by the formation of a parade Subcommittee, uh, which will work with the Public Celebrations Committee on those events. As far as.
Well, I'm not looking necessarily for an update right now. I'm just saying, um, on our agenda, every so often, maybe quarterly or whatever, it'd be really good. I'm especially concerned about preparing to go to town meeting next year and how how the how the budget is tracking.
I'm more than you.
Okay, so if we could get an update in the next few meetings, that'd be really good. Thanks.
Thank you.
But by the way, the next uh, Municipal Affordable Housing Trust meeting that we were talking about earlier, where they're going to talk about how they budget their funds is July 18th at 5 o'clock.
Okay.
Okay.
So the next item on the agenda is the update on the Joint Dispatch Center.
Right.
Sure, so there were two two items I think we were going to cover here. I believe in the packet, there's a a brief memo on the the grant issue that was raised. So at the last meeting, um, a resident raised a question about whether or not pausing the the um, or but take taking a break to see if there are other partners for a period of up to six months, if that would jeopardize any of the grant funding. So I did reach out to our project consultant, Mark Katie uh, from CTA Consulting, and he said that that would not be an issue, that we likely would need to file a budget modification to the grant, because we may be using the grant um, at a different timetable or for different purposes, but he did not see that as an issue. We have successfully filed grant modifications to date, project to date, and he did not see that as an issue.
Now, we were having other other discussions with our um, our counterparts and um, and uh.
So I did meet with Acton Select Board Member Dean Charter. We had a very nice chat. Um, one thing that he told me, which was really interesting, was that this um, rec was not originally a Select Board goal in Acton. And it's not, they have 27 goals this year, and it's not even one of their goals this year. It's, he said, not even on their radar screen, really. So that I thought that was very interesting. However, now, they are possibly going to discuss it at their July 24th meeting. They're not discussing it tonight. Uh, what they're going to discuss, um, if it makes it on that agenda, are the two questions that we asked them, which is is Acton open to um, exploring a more neutral site, and is Acton open to including other neighboring communities? So that's all I have to report until their Select Board meets. Um, as soon as they meet and we're here, I'll be happy to report.
Good, and we are now in the process of at least looking at the possibility of uh, our being able to provide some neutral sites. Um, so it is a re- it is a reality, or is a, there is potential for locating it in other places other than the public safety facilities of either town.
Right, one of the sites he brought up was um, their senior center area. Um, if you know where the Acton Senior Center is, um, I did not bring up any sites in Concord at the time, but um, you know, I know we have some possibilities.
Hmm, okay, well, the fact, the fact, it's just good to know that there are other options.
Right.
Okay, I think that takes care of that. And so when, their 27th is when they're going to?
24th, they're hoping to get it on their agenda, but um, it's not definite. And um.
So maybe we can take that forward. Is it uh, August 8th, once, or a meeting in August? I, I.
August 7th.
August 7th, so maybe we put that on for August 7?
Yep.
Okay, great.
Okay, okay, thank you. So we also now have the um, the the update on the um, Hanscom um, um, letter and which is also uh.
Okay, so again, I don't really have anything to report. I um, got an email uh, reply from Doug Lucenti, who is running this whole effort, the uh, Select Board in Lexington. They did discuss the letter, but they don't have any comments yet. So um, I mean, basically, this is going to take several weeks for all four Select Boards to review the letter. So I've sent in our comments, and we have to wait and hear from the other Select Boards. And then we'll have another draft that we can review. And we want to have a finished product by say, August 31st, because in September, uh, the governor is just going to need to take action. If 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 that's the time to take action, if the governor's going to take action, it's going to be in September, we think.
Okay, um, I I think that also we have want to maybe try to explore getting some other um, environmental and other interested non-municipal groups involved in the environmental review process, which would include um, potentially the um, National Park, the um, Audubon Society, Conservation Law, um, Foundation, um, and uh, uh, the American Heritage, all of them who have resources that.
You mean Save Our Heritage?
Save Our Heritage, yes.
And maybe the Battle Road Group. There there's, there's several groups, right?
Just double checking. Last schedule I had was August 14th and August 28th.
For the Select Board meetings?
Yeah.
Um, I thought we had one that came out today.
I think we changed it.
We changed, it came out today.
Today?
Yes, so it's the 7th and then the 21st, if we need it, and then the 28th.
I didn't see that.
We did that so that we could avoid having Tuesday meetings.
And avoid Labor Day, but that just came out today.
It just came out today, Mark. You get it?
Okay. Don't see it yet.
Oh, thank you, Henry.
I got it.
That's great. Oh, so you've got it all the way to January now. Thank you, that's very helpful for planning.
Thank you.
Okay, so then, uh, are we ready to move on to the goals and objectives?
Well, um, do we want to talk at all about the item that was in our packet about um, exploring environmental council?
It's not on the agenda.
Not, it's not, it was just for information at this point.
Okay.
But I do mention the fact that that is my own view of this is that the most effective strategy is going to be dealing with the environmental review process, which is essentially an administrative and legal issue, which is why I'm talking about perhaps getting other organizations, non-municipal, but but other organizations that are have essentially uh, litigation and um, lobbying uh, uh, resources.
Right, I agree with you, and I'm wondering if they, if we should invite them to be signatories to the letter? Or is that just for Select Boards?
Who knows? I mean, I think that.
I can speak.
Yeah, go ahead, Linda.
Um, I I think the letter that um, Terry, you've been communicating with Doug on, is really meant for the Select Boards at this point.
That's fine.
And and I think that the, of course, the more parties you get involved in any particular product, the more complex it becomes, and the greater the delay and so on.
Right, right.
So that it might make more sense essentially to have two different letters.
Yeah.
One letter be the towns writing to the governor, and another letter from us and some of these uh, environmental organizations also um, writing to the governor and expressing the their specific environmental interests.
That's a good idea, okay.
That makes it less complicated and makes it, you know, because the um, the difficulty of a task, I think, increases exponentially based on the number of parties involved.
Correct.
Hmm, I believe we have a member of the public that would like to make a comment.
Hmm.
We have a member of the public that would like to make a comment. Um, Diane Proctor.
Oh, Diane, you'd like to speak?
Thank you very much, 57 Sudbury Road, Diane Proctor. There is an organization that is working vigorously. It has an alliance of over 20 different organizations um, that are working on the Stop the Jet Expansion at Hanscom. Um, so that effort is going on, it's vigorously, it's, it meets every week. Um, its vigorous signs are heading out all over, not just Concord, but Lexington, Lincoln, Bedford. Um, and so I think that uh, if if you want somebody from that group to come in and report to you, it would be lovely. But you should know that there's been a lot of, a lot of work and a lot of effort, and we, the the group deeply appreciates um, the the meeting that you had um, on the Hanscom Expansion, and appreciates the effort you all are making.
I didn't, I didn't get what that organization was.
Me, yeah, what's the name of it, Diane?
Stop. It's called Stop Jet Expansion.
Okay.
StopPrivateJetExpansion.org, I believe.
Right, StopPrivateJetExpansion.org. And if you look at their website, you can see the organizations that are involved and the initiatives that they're undertaking. And it's a rather vigorous website, and there will be a lot of what are deemed standouts. Um, which will be opportunities that you're going to be seeing a lot of it on Monument Square, for instance, of people holding up signs uh, and speaking to this very issue. So you you should know there is a lot of, there's a lot of public activity going on that is that is not municipal. Um, but deeply appreciate what you all are doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now, are we ready to move on to our goals and objectives?
Here we are.
Um, I tried to digest what came to me. Um, and um, I I don't know how you want to go about this. Um, I tried to arrange um, these in um, these in different ways, uh, both by subject matter and by um, um, various people's priorities. Um, and so uh, my thought is that maybe one way for us to approach this is to take the the list and try to, uh, among ourselves, assign assuming that we want to probably list all of these items. List to determine what the what the numerical priority of those would be, you know, a list of goals and objectives. So I'm willing to take any comments on that and see what we can do to get um, something, uh, make some progress on this.
Um, can I ask, um, what do we want to come out with at the end? Do we want to come out with only three, or are we gonna just prioritize these in order, or?
If you ask me what I think the right number is, I think, I think the right number is certainly more than three, but mo- much less than I think the 47 we had last year.
Right, what about 15? Is that too many?
Well, I think 50, I I'm not sure what the right number is, but I think if the object is to, I think my object was to get goals that were fairly concrete and measurable.
Right.
And um, so that, I think, and I think there's a limited number of things that we can hope to accomplish in the um, between now and the end of our um, our um, you know, what our year. So um, and there were, you know, the, you know, there wasn't a lot of overlap in the things that people chose as being their priorities.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, one was, you know, I think one that recurred a couple of times is a residential tax exemption. Um, um, you know, support for affordable housing, um, those, I think there was a common thread there. Um, um, but you know, uh, I think that if we, if we took the ones that are on on my spreadsheet here and just arranged them in some order, we would have plenty of stuff to think about.
So there are two of them that got two votes, at least two of them, the residential tax exemption and the support MBTA's community zoning. So um, for the um, residential tax exemption, I think that is. that is a concrete goal. We know what we have to do for that, I think. But for the MBTA community zoning, I think it's very important. I would support that goal, but I think we need to make it concrete. What are we gonna do to support it?
Well, I guess my first question here is how many of these goals are, do they have to be unanimous? Or are they the board's goals? Or are they a compilation of individual goals, some of which have more support from board members than others? I think the latter is what we're talking, I don't think these goals have unanimous, uh, do any of these goals have unanimous support?
Well, it depends what you mean. Like, um, the two I just mentioned were not mine, but I still support them. Um, because we were only allowed to pick three.
Right.
So I certainly support the MBTA community zoning. I'd like to make it concrete what we do. And I certainly support more discussion and probably adoption of the residential tax exemption, but they didn't come out as my top three, but I support them.
Right, okay, okay, so you so you do support them.
Right. So I'm not sure if I'm not supporting anything on the list. I mean, I guess.
That's a good question.
Yeah, I don't know.
I think your question about what are we going to do around them is important. I think that it's quite clear that the MBTA zoning one has come up at just about every meeting. Um, we're on a short timeline for it, and I think we do need to to maybe in terms of just scheduling our attention at critical times to make sure that that it's getting the right level of of focus at in a on a timely basis, so we don't miss any deadlines. Likewise, I I saw a theme come out around around budgets and and what might be happening there, and I think again, we could potentially schedule or sponsor some well timed events that relate to um prioritizing in the budgeting process or, you know, potentially resolving the many and varied calls for funds so that so that that operates in a in as smooth a manner as possible. So I think that that what's useful about this exercise is I think all of us sort of identified some things that may need some joint action and other things that are particular focuses of our portfolios.
I I agree with you on the budget. I'm the one who put those in, and um I I think we would have to figure out that's the town manager's job to put together the budget, so we don't want to micromanage that. We have to figure out exactly how our role is going to work. But other other than that, I agree with you.
Yeah, and what I'm saying is the the thing that we can uniquely do is is bring attention to certain topics at certain times.
Right.
So essentially, you know, bring to the surface what the what the various goals are. I I'm thinking of the communication we received earlier this week from the uh school committee with respect to the handling of the transportation funds that are related to the to the shelter and some of the options that are on the table about that, and that those kinds of issues don't necessarily get an airing unless we unless we raise them or put them on the agenda or have a discussion about how to handle it. That would in my mind, truly represents a let's call it an unexpected expense. I mean, it was predictable once the shelter appeared, but the shelter appeared in a hurry.
But I think isn't that
After the budget was built, yeah.
Isn't that up to the finance committee, since they're the ones who determine whether um money from reserves is spent?
Yeah.
So I think I interpreted that as it was for our information, but it wasn't really for our action.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is by the time you look at when you when you start to think about the various financial issues and and having I think that the way we get to consensus is by having people understand the broad range of possible calls and the urgencies of some of those calls. And so what I'm suggesting is we might want to consider whether there are any ways that we could help raise the general awareness of what the what the various polls are that are coming up uniquely this year and help with the process in that way.
I want to go back to something I said earlier, which is supporting goals, and there are some goals that I'm seeing here for the first time that I don't uh completely understand what what's behind them. So I wonder if we could take a minute to
Yeah.
Sure.
So there's a goal here. Um, Henry, I think it's yours. Promote efficiency, quality, and focus of select board and town government, right? That's good. You say favor in person meeting to build community and communication. So what what exactly do you mean by favoring in person meetings? So that I can understand what.
Well, running meetings like the Chair's Breakfast, for instance, which is run as an in person meeting with people being in the same place at the same time, talking to each other. And I think that part of that has to do with, you know, reflects uh on many of the issues that we deal with, such as the effectiveness of town meeting and balancing its effectiveness as a legislative body as uh against its um its utility as a a means of bringing people together face to face with each other. So um I think it has broad implications about about uh trying to preserve or to encourage uh things that build community and communication between people directly with each other as opposed to electronically, you know.
Can I can I tell you my perspective on on this?
Sure.
I feel that um our our role should be to be as inclusive as we can, and the for people who either can't be here for whatever reason, having hybrid meetings means that they can um participate where they might otherwise not.
I understand.
You do. So how can we um incent people to be here and yet still make it if they can't be here, they're not excluded?
It's, well, unfortunately, what happens is that because of the availability of um participation remotely, many people who otherwise could attend don't bother to because it's too easy not to show up now. And we see that frequently with people who will actually will be there on the video screen with us, talking to us, and then show up later in the meeting.
I think that's I think that's assuming an awful lot about people's intentions that we don't really understand. I think that we need to be very careful about about the fact that um access to to government, access to dialogue is is a is a really important goal and there there may be some individuals who 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 take advantage of it from convenience, but I think there are far more individuals that take advantage of of this for necessity. They might have um some kind of responsibilities with relation to to caring for other people, whether there be children or elders or a job or some some other thing that that makes um particular in person attendance at any given time um not available. I also think there's there's huge value in the ability for the proceedings to be recorded and summarized and available for people to to consume and to become familiar with at times other than when something is taking place live. It's not it's it it doesn't allow for direct participation, but it allows for people to to um get the information. So um, I think that that I also agree that it's important that we do try to promote direct dialogue with across across the various media so that so that as many voices as possible are being heard. Uh, so I'm a little concerned with the idea of favoring one one method over another as opposed to trying to make sure that as many methods as possible are available to as many people as possible.
Well, it's a matter of really a matter of priorities and so and balance.
Yeah.
Okay, and my my sense is that the balance is going um in the wrong direction. Your sense is it's going in the right direction. I think we'll probably disagree about that, and maybe this is if the board is going to adopt a um a goal, it it might be one that is satisfactory uh to the majority of the board.
What about encourage in person meeting? Because I do understand that having people in person um does in some ways enhance communication and connection. I I do understand that. So what if we said encourage in person meeting, which is just that, encourage it and try to convince people that um being here in person um matters? Would that, does that work for you, Henry?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Sorry to be agreeable. And it's I I know it's out of character.
So encourage. Great. Okay, good. Can I keep going?
Sure.
Okay, so the the other one I'm looking at, Linda, this is yours, and it says um outline of town meeting and department goals for twenty four priorities and use of ARPA funds. There's a lot there. So I'm wondering, can you make that? Um, what do you mean by that specifically?
Okay, thank you, Mary. Can you just read it to me again, please?
Sure, it's it's written here as outline of town meeting and department goals for twenty four. And then under comments in the summary, it was priorities and use of ARPA funds. So there's a I think this was condensed a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
Generously.
No, I I um um, but Carrie was terrific about having department heads come in this last year at various times to tell give us an update on what they were working on and what some of their goals are. Um, I'm just suggesting that I think it would be helpful to us as a board person uh it as an entity, as well as give us better information in terms of how to support uh our town manager. If we had just a uh not an exhaustive uh kind of report, but just a a brief um summary of the major objectives for each of the departments at the beginning of our fiscal year or towards the beginning of our fiscal year, similar to what the um planning department.
Manager, not town meeting.
Oh, town manager.
Yeah, so it's number two on the in the packet on page sixty.
So does that explain what I was trying to accomplish there?
Yeah, the the full statement was received before September and outline summary of the town managers and department goals for FY twenty four.
Thank you.
Specifically identifying priorities for each to include anticipated use of ARPA funds as known at this time.
Great, I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
I would definitely support that.
Yeah. Uh, it occurs to me, looking over, maybe you have others, Mary, and I think this is a good process, but it it occurs to me that some of some of what I think each of us presented might make sense to be proposals for agenda items for future meetings. So some of these things may just need a look or or a couple of looks throughout the year, and maybe we should be trying to identify which ones need us to sort of operate together as opposed to which ones maybe just need some attention as brought forward by the proposing board member.
Okay, I've got a proposal. Uh, what if we were to condense some of these? Because there is some overlap.
Right.
And then we could have next to us, what would be the action that we take? And and so is this something we we need to have on an agenda item? Is this something we just need a quarterly report? And then we I guess, and then I'm done.
Okay, so do you want to start like?
No, I'm thinking off, not now.
Oh.
But we could do that and come back. What would you want to do? That was a proposal.
Well, my my experience in dealing with like in political organizations, platforms, party platforms and so on.
Right.
Is that the real value is not the product, it is the discussion that leads to the product. Um, and so you have it, it gives you uh the opportunity to get different points of view on the issues that are presented for discussion.
Okay, so you want to talk about it now?
Yeah, I think so, because also
Okay.
I think we should try to finish this by next meeting, because we don't want to be talking goals all the way into August, September, October, right? We want to start working on this.
Okay, so maybe we go down them here, because there is some overlap. So I think we did the first one, right, which is we're going to change the first one to encourage in person meetings, and this is just an ongoing. Right, this is not, this does not have a a timeline or a due date or an action item, right?
Okay.
The next one is revised personnel board charge and bylaw. Again, I think that's something we all.
Yeah, the the board's working on that, and it I believe it's important. It's been an ongoing process for a couple of years, and they'll be ready to come and show us something within a meeting or two. So I I'm happy to make sure that we just get that on a time.
This one may happen anyway, so we can take credit for it if we take identify it as a goal.
Right, so the action item is agenda um
Yeah.
item in the next few months.
Right.
You're capturing this, Shannon? Okay. Do you want me to continue?
Yes, please.
Okay, and the next one is um outline of town manager and department goals for twenty four priorities and use of ARPA funds. So I I see that as two things, goals and the other is basically a source and use of ARPA funds. Is that how people interpret that?
Yeah.
Okay, so I think we said that the the outline of the department goals would be
By September, that's
And it would be written.
Well, let's see what what Carrie.
Yeah, what do you think, Carrie?
I mean, do you have, do you have the ability to have this ready by September?
Sure, the first meeting in September.
Yep, great.
Okay.
And then the ARPA funds source and use, same?
Yeah, I mean, we can update the report that has been presented to the board multiple times, and maybe by September, we'll we'll be looking at fiscal twenty five.
Hmm.
Um, so
Okay.
And have something for September.
Okay, a strategic planning process.
Well, so wait a second. So I think you were talking about consolidating. I think if we're talking about the first meeting in September, we could consolidate um some of that stuff with some of the budget stuff, too. If we're talking about ARPA. Um, because the chart you're looking at, Mary, it's just um sorted alphabetically. It's on the right hand column. It's not sorted. But anyway.
I'm looking at the one by subject.
Yeah.
It's the last.
All right, we'll keep going. I think that we could when we get to that, I could say.
Okay, you're right, we might double up some of these.
Yeah.
Okay, um, next one, a strategic planning process to clarify five year priorities. Uh, oh, gosh.
So
That is a big one.
Yeah, I can speak to that a little bit. Um, I I originally said three to five year goals, and I think um in some ways, when Carrie laid out, the town manager laid out her goals last year, she had many goals on there that would were clearly going to be more than the first year.
Right.
And and through the budgeting process with with uh, as I understand it, with her departments looking at the tier one capital, you're already looking out three to five years there. And so there may be a way of taking rather than a a full blown strategic planning process to take what she's already has with having conversations with the departments uh that are reflected in that capital one, tier one, as well as in in her own um goals that she gave us last year. If you recall, there were many on two different pages at least, uh, which I saw as being and 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 just sort of put pull it together, I guess, is what I'm looking at.
Right, so
I'd say condense it.
Well, what I'm thinking is um we're talking about four or five different goals here that are all interacting and could all be on the same agenda item, and that would be department head goals, ARPA plan, um tightening the budget, looking at revenue and strategic planning. It's sort of all going, they all interact, and they could all be one big long meeting. How about one shortening?
So
Yeah.
I think specifically on that one, though, the the discussion about the residential ex exemption.
I didn't include that one.
Not in not in the budget?
It's it's
That's a whole different thing.
Yeah, I don't think it's part of budget conversation.
You don't think it's helpful to, uh, well, I I think it might be helpful for that to to run the budget discussions a little bit.
I think it's okay. I think it's very important for the budget, and I'll tell you why.
Why?
Because, because our budget has gotten so tight. And then we're getting more and more getting more and more surprises that come up in terms of, for instance, the additional school expenses. And then we are facing, for instance, finding money to deal with some of the necessary preliminary expenses for the nuclear metals site. That we're gonna be, we, we are likely, we are very likely to be facing an override in the near future. And I think that having passed the residential exemption makes it much more feasible to run an override if we need it. Because it doesn't have the same drastic effect on, you know, people's survivability. Because at least the people on the lower end of the economic spectrum are much less affected by the, by, by the override expenses if they are essentially protected against significant increases in taxation. So I think it makes, I think it makes an override possible or more palatable if we need it, if we have the residential exemption.
So I agree with you, Henry, but I'm thinking about the timing. So when we set the tax rate is usually November, maybe December. And I don't want to wait that long to hear about the department goals, the ARPA plan, starting our strategic. So I'm going to propose that we have one discussion of all of this stuff in like, say, early September. Then when we get to the residential exemption, you know, in November or December, we discuss it again. Because it's going to be ongoing, we're not going to solve everything in one meeting.
Terry, I think we need to talk about the residential tax exemption well ahead of when we vote the tax.
Okay.
We need to remember that, that that's a shift, not, it doesn't actually relieve
That's right.
the towns as a whole. And so there's, there's an inflection point somewhere along that line where somebody is actually paying
More.
more than they would have paid had we done nothing. And so we know who we're going to hear from. If we do.
Okay, so I, what you guys are saying is that we discuss all of these topics together in September, for example.
No, I'm, I'm suggesting that we, if we want to front-end the residential tax exemption discussion before we talk about these other things that impact spending in the budget, that we do that sooner.
For example, one could model a proposal around residential exemption on what it would have done to the current year's tax.
Right.
Exactly.
So people could understand
Right.
had whatever policy we, we think we might adopt been in place this year. This is what it would have done for them.
So when do you guys want to have that conversation?
Exactly, sooner rather than later.
Like in August or something?
What, what do we have on for July twenty-fourth?
Okay.
What do you think, Henry? What do you think?
Doesn't our assessors need to do some work to help us for that?
They, they've got a heads-up.
Yeah.
No, they have a heads-up.
They have a heads-up, we need, we need to do a little bit of more massaging with their approach to it.
They came in in April, remembering.
Right, yes, I was there.
And that was excellent.
Yes.
Right.
So what I'm saying is.
Done a lot of work.
They, they, they've done some of the thinking, so I think we may need to give them a straw man to, to work with and ask them to come back and, and explain what it might look like. And then we could understand what the basis is going forward into this year's budget. And I think teasing those two things apart has the advantage of, of making sure that we understand what the impact of one, one, one set of decisions is having, even before we understand what the challenges are with the, with the upcoming budget.
So you're saying do that one as soon as possible, as soon as the assessors are ready.
What do you think, Henry?
Well, I think that I think that I think the assessors at this point are a reluctant partner in this project. And I want to do a little work over the next week or so in terms of maybe getting a, a more practical approach to it. And starting, I'm starting to look at what other towns with the residential exemptions have actually done and what their process has been and what their forms are and how they've gone about it, which is something that the assessors have not done. And so I think we need to do a little more work in making that, making that work. But I think there's also, time is short.
Right.
If we want to have it implemented for this fiscal year.
Right.
Time is very short.
Very short, because if you want to have that done before we even discuss the department goals and the ARPA funds and all of that. Um, you know, I, I just don't want to put all of that off until December.
So what my hope is, I think that assessors see it as a very complicated and time, and time-consuming process. And I want to see whether, and I'm not clear that they've looked at the ways to streamline the process. And I think if they can streamline the process, then it can be accomplished more easily and more quickly. But we need to do a little work on that.
So when do you think would be the soonest we could have a cooperative discussion with the assessors?
Am I right, Mary? You're the liaison to the assessors?
But. What?
She's wondering if they're discussing.
They are.
I think, I think mid.
They haven't had a meeting for a while.
I think mid-August.
Mid-August, they haven't had a meeting for a while.
Okay.
All I've been talking to is Meredith Stone, our assessor, and, and David Carr, who's not.
So how about this? We're, we're asking Shannon to kind of put together her whole draft of this. So if we put mid-August for, for that.
Yep.
And then we can stick to what we said a few minutes ago, the early, the first meeting in September. Do those strategic and goal and budget things? How's, how does that sound?
Yep. So that would be eight, seven for the, the assessors, August seventh. And then it would be September eighteenth would be the first meeting in September.
Oh, yeah, or the August twenty-eighth or something, yeah. Okay, good.
So can I just interject?
Go ahead.
Shannon, if you could provide me with your draft of your minutes in the next couple of days, so I can use them. No, so that I can use, without having to take notes on everything here. I can schedule all these things for future meetings without my having to be confusing myself the way you're getting confused.
Shannon, if we're not making, yeah.
The outline of manager and department goals, strategic planning and cut costs and tight town budget is what I understood.
And. Explore ways to enhance revenue.
Right, explore ways to enhance.
Those four.
Right.
Are going to be in September. And the residential tax exemption will be in August. Very good. Okay, so I, if I'm looking at our list now by subject, I think we're down to advanced climate action via the Solar Task Force, that's ongoing. I mean, we're not going to hear from them until probably the end of next year.
So that's kind of there with the Personnel Board one, we need to just schedule some check-ins with them.
Yes.
Periodically.
Exactly, okay, good. Support developments of the DEI plan.
Likewise.
Okay.
Well, I just want to say something about that. Okay, I guess maybe if we have enough check-ins, because we haven't had too many in the last two years and things are moving very slowly there. And, but now I think things are starting to speed up, so because we have a new consultant that we've met and so.
Yeah, tomorrow they're going to go through the preliminary plan.
Great.
The, it's, it's on their, their agenda, they're meeting tomorrow. I unfortunately won't be able to be there in person because I'll be traveling, but so I expect that by the next time, they'll have some things they want to talk about. I think the only place that that intersects with the budget is whatever comes back from town manager priorities with respect to what the DEI program is likely to consume in the FY25.
Besides the budget, we, we'd like to hear the plan.
Yeah, that's why I was saying the Personnel Board progress on charge and, and bylaw, the, the Solar Task Force progress and the, and the DEI commission progress, those are prior, you know, what, what I call a board and committee initiatives that we want to stay close to this year.
Okay.
Probably up to the liaison, whether they think it's time for a check-in.
That's what I was trying to say, not very clearly before.
No, that, I agree, I agree with you.
Okay, that's fine.
Good. Okay, so we're moving right along.
Maybe also with the housing production plan and goals skipping down to the third from the last one.
So, well, we're almost there. So we, we did the support to development to the DEI plan, we got that. That's going to be a check-in depending upon the liaison. And now we're down to support MBTA community zoning. I would consolidate that with promote diversity of housing option, housing production planning goals, townwide support of.
I would, I would add to that, support MBTA community zoning and, and other zoning initiatives to promote the, the production, housing production.
Okay. Okay, that's great. And how do we do that?
Yeah, how, that's what I want to know. What are our action steps for that?
Well, I think they're going to probably flow from the discussion of the MBTA zoning because I think there, it's, it's going to kind of the discussion there is going to probably give rise to alternative proposals for zoning incentives.
Uh, wait a minute, you said the discussion, which discussion?
The discussion of the MBTA community zoning.
You mean like the community forums they're going to have or?
I mean, the discussions of when we, when we, when we see how the actual where that actually goes in terms of the concrete details of the program. And we see what is feasible and what is not feasible. We will probably get a better idea of how, whether or not that is successful. That there may be other ways that we can provide for zoning changes that be, that may be less extreme and incentives that we could provide for, for private development that would be more attractive than, than the 40B process, that we could come up with other ways, a combination of other zoning initiatives and incentives that might be, that might actually.
But we have to remember that
Implemented.
These things have to come from the Planning Board, not, not the Select Board. So it's not really our job to tell the Planning Board what zoning bylaws to bring to town meeting. I think this year.
Well, I think, you know, I, I think it, I, I think that the idea of the, the Planning Board is really not a policymaking board. And I think if the town has priorities about what they want to have, what, what, what kind, what, where we want to go in terms of zoning initiatives, such as, you know, if we want to encourage them to have, for instance, additional dwelling units or greater density in something, I think it's entirely appropriate for us to go to the Planning Board and say, we would like you to come up with a, a zoning program that would provide a greater, greater density for residential housing.
Well, in the past, these things have in fact come from the Department of Planning and Land Management through the Planning Board and not with the involvement of the Select Board. So I think if we're going to, if we're looking at our this year's goals, maybe this year's goals should focus on what's in front of the Planning Board this year, which is the, the MBTA Communities Act and how do we comply? And your point earlier about what's feasible and what's not feasible, well, we don't know yet. So I think maybe our goal is to be, to participate in that conversation so that we find out what, what does the town want? And.
And what they are willing to vote for at town meeting. And I think we should not necessarily put all of our eggs in the MBTA basket.
It, it might be too soon to tell.
It always is.
But eventually, we're going to have, eventually, we're going to have an article in front of us, which is what we're doing right now. It's just to try to figure out what exactly will that article say.
Right, so to get to the Select Board's role.
Yes.
Mary, you, this is one of your goals, support MBTA community zoning. So what is your, what do you have in mind that you think the Select Board should be doing?
It was also one of mine.
And Mark too, right, what do you guys?
Well, mine was actually said actually participate in the Planning Board efforts to implement zoning changes consistent with the MBTA Zonings Act. So I am very clear out there saying that we should enact something that is consistent with what's now called Section 3A. That was my goal.
Yeah, I made some comments at the last meeting, Terry, that basically went in the direction of zoning is particularly challenging for town meeting.
Right.
It's a place where town meeting often struggles, let's say, to be efficient.
I remember, I was watching on Zoom, I do remember you saying that.
And so I think that, that by paying close attention to the process, making sure that we're really soliciting community input to, well, first promoting the, the need for everybody to get educated. Every time I read through the, the MBTA zoning, Section 3A stuff, I learned something I didn't understand before.
Yeah.
So we're all learning fast. But then what we need to do is really have a very active conversation that needs to happen this fall that, that envisions what that zoning result might be. And, you know, to Henry's point, that could go somewhat beyond the, the mere numbers of, of that and might also point to some other initiatives. For example, one of the things that really surprised me from the last forum was that there is literally no place in Concord where you can build multifamily by right.
Right.
We just don't have it.
Right, that was amazing.
That was surprising.
Yep.
I, I knew, you know, apparently we have it by special permit in some places, but that's not the same thing. And so I think this, this examination, I'm sure there are some districts where we could, you know, put up one of those famous tables that the Planning Board comes up with and switch a yes to a no, you know, and suddenly we would have it by right in some places. Now, whether or not that would make it MBTA zoning, that's, that's somebody, something else. My, my point being, we've got a process where we need to get educated. We need to have a community discussion about what it's going to look like. And then we need to make sure that, that there's some consensus about the idea that we're on the right track so that when this gets to town meeting, people really understand what it is and we don't find ourselves lost in, in the zoning Bermuda Triangle of town meeting.
Okay, this is Linda, I would just add to that, that in addition to all the public forums and the solicitation already of boards and committees to support this process going along, part of supporting that process will be that we at least are a touchstone, mentioning it, some aspect of it at each of our upcoming Select Board meetings between now and town meeting. It's a way, it's another way of supporting the visibility, the education and the whole process on this.
And, and keep in mind that while there are some issues which have a very active and large constituency, I don't. I don't, although there's a lot of enthusiasm among some for. More affordable housing, I don't think it has that large and active constituency, which is going to come in. And flood the town meeting. So it's, I think, getting any substantial zoning change that will provide more. More affordable housing or more multifamily housing is going to be a hard sell to the town meeting. Even though it only requires a majority vote.
I agree. I think, you know, it might in fact be exactly the opposite. It seems to me that there. There may be some.
Yes.
More organized concern.
Yes, that's right. So so I would not count on the fact that. Regardless of what we do and what the Planning Board does and how much educating we do, that. That we're going to get a favorable town meeting vote on MBTA zoning. In fact, it would surprise me to be honest with you.
And remind us what happens if we don't.
That's a question we bears a great deal of discussion.
All right.
Well, this is what we need to be educated on and we've heard what what. Could happen. We've heard that. So we need we need to to be educated. I think. I think what I'm sensing here is that the board is kind of split on whether how we feel towards this MBTA zoning. Act. And so maybe we need to talk about it more amongst ourselves. We don't have to do that now, but eventually eventually the Planning Board is going to come up with an article that we either have to support or not.
Right.
So and we can influence what that is and we can go beyond it, like like you said earlier, Henry, which might be something that. I don't know if it's realistic to think that would happen this year, but we could certainly propose it as some as an option.
But I think that. There's an interesting question about where. Where are our housing policies as reflected in our zoning? Actually does get built if it's I I've I've heard two opinions. Henry, I believe, was saying earlier that he thought that that actually did start with us and I thought. That you were expressing an opinion that it starts with the town planner and the zoning and the Planning Board. And I'm. Open to hearing more about both. I actually do think that it's time for a bigger conversation. So. What's what I think has been going on in the in the Planning Board of late. Has been more incremental and more administrative and not necessarily grappling with the housing issues. You know, the the state has maybe done us a favor by putting a hard deadline out. Calling it MBTA zoning and forcing us to actually have that conversation. I think it's time for that conversation.
Okay.
I think the the Chair of the Planning, first of all, the Planning Board has a lot of new members on it.
Yeah.
Okay, and the Chair of the Planning Board and Megan have been and Elizabeth Hughes and Aaron Stevens have been very active as far as trying to understand what is this. So what is the MBT communities? What does that mean? What could it look like for us? So. I think that there's real initiative there.
Right, so I think I'm really interested in getting some action steps for these. So I've written down some of what you guys said. That I'm hoping Shannon will get, like the Select Board should actively participate. In the community forums. We should promote citizen education on Section 3A and publicize the forums, talk about them. At every meeting if we can, get people to show up at town meeting. And maybe have an agenda item where we talk about the larger conversation. Where does zoning come from? Does it come from staff? Does it should it start coming from? The Select Board more and we talk about a larger conversation. Those are the four action steps that I heard. Maybe there's some others.
I think we participate, but we don't lead. To your last point.
So who do we look to?
The Planning Board.
Leadership. Okay.
The Planning Board and the Planning and Land Management Department.
That's how it's been.
That's how it's been.
Anyway, I was just trying to figure out what the Select Board role is. And so we have a big role in getting people to hear about it, come to forums, come to town meetings. We definitely have a big role there and to keep talking about it.
So I've been recognizing that there's a there's a lot of energy around the issue that we call housing. And that.
Yes.
That the the various housing groups and, you know, I would. Call out, you know, sort of Keith Bergman is as one of the real leaders in that have been calling us to think about housing and the fact that. That what you have available for housing is generally speaking, a direct result of zoning. Because zoning is the implementation of the housing policy. So. I I like the idea of of encouraging sort of. The Housing Roundtable to to actually be the leadership and the Planning Board to to think about how to administratively implement. The goals that are coming out of that group.
So that we have a Housing Production Plan.
Right.
Right? So we we've got a map.
We do.
And so. I think what you just said is a great idea.
Yeah, that's a really good idea, Housing Roundtable.
Well, they do. We do have Housing Roundtables.
No, I mean, they could take the lead and and having this conversation, I think that's great.
And the and the Planning Board has the has the responsibility to try to implement those those changes that. That are being called for to.
Yes.
Create the housing that we that we want.
But I don't think that the.
I think Carrie wants to say something.
Oh, I. I I guess what I wanted to to say was just to call attention to the Housing Production Plan, which is a document that this board. Signed on to and what I was trying to think through in my brain is, is it your document or my document? And I think I hear. Liz Rust in in my ear saying it's it's really my document to implement, but this board certainly. Signed on to that. So I think it's important when you talk about who takes the lead.
Yep.
It depends on exactly the specific task, but this board is always in the position of. Of being a cheerleader and supporter of anything that's in the Housing Production Plan.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. What are we doing with the goals?
Great, we're done. Well, we didn't do.
We didn't do transportation. So that again, I think it's just like DEI.
I do too. The tack is working with Megan and Aaron. And I'm really hoping we'll have something to report really soon.
All right, we're done.
We have a comment.
Yes. Please step up but grab yourself a microphone. Introduce yourself.
Prash.
Welcome, Ray Sun, Sudbury Road. Chair of the Finance Committee. It might be helpful for the Select Board. To be aware of the Finance Committee's work plan for this year. I think there are many similar aspects. Two major initiatives that we're going to be focused on are encouraging various town bodies and schools to develop. Ideas and implement them for sustainable revenue growth. That's one major category. The second one is capital spend and planning.
There we go, sorry. Okay, so.
Start again.
Prash Patel, 397 Sudbury Road. Chair of the Finance Committee, wanted to make you aware of the Finance Committee's work plans for this fiscal year. The first major category is. Sustainable revenue growth, basically encouraging. Town, departments, schools, committees to develop ideas and implement them for sustainable revenue growth. That can be through. A number of different things, user fees, obviously pilots, as well as frankly encouraging zoning that encourages. Commercial development, for example. And then capital spend and planning is another major bucket. And we've already started. Educating ourselves and I think what we'd like to do is to push for a town and school. Integrated capital plan for Tier One, Tier Two and Tier Three. And you hear more little more about that in the coming weeks and months from us. But then more directly to some of the discussions that took place, one piece. That we would like to encourage the town to do is develop a strategic plan. As with interest, I'm hearing this discussion about what is a strategic plan? Is it simply three or five year? Objectives and then there's this, well, who is responsible for Housing Production Plan, etc. And I think from the. Committee's discussions we've had in the last couple. Months, as well as frankly, some of the discussion last year. We think the town would be served by having a five-year strategic plan. That outlines some of the major priorities for the town. And then it might serve as a roadmap rather than sort of year-to-year objectives, if you will. I've had one conversation with Carrie. What we did in our deliverables is begin to encourage. We don't have an end date yet. I saw December here. I think from our perspective, depending on what you do and the resources involved, December might be a stretch. And so we'd love to work with Carrie a little bit and figure out what is the right time. To set for a deadline for developing one. And obviously with input, not just from a finance committee, hopefully, but. Select Board and other committees and maybe even residents around town. So maybe encourage the Select Board to think a little bit about. Setting a timetable for when a plan can be developed and some of the major milestones to get it done.
Can I ask a question?
So I just wanted to provide that input and we'd be happy to share the deliverables. We're gonna. We've got draft deliver deliverables already and we're going to finalize them in our next meeting. So happy to share that with you after the 20th.
So so I have a quick question about that, probably for Carrie. So the Envision Concord, was that, is that considered a strategic plan? Or not really? And and that was done, I think, in 2015.
It's it's newer than 2015. It's probably 2017.
Okay, but is that, is that the kind of thing you have in mind?
No, I I think it's a. It's a it's a master, it's a master plan of sorts, but I think there are. It's less concrete.
Yes.
It's not, and so I I I'm glad that you that you. Made these comments because the other thing I was thinking of when the strategic planning item came up is that. One of the, one of the ARPA priorities was there was some money set aside for strategic planning. Process and that was really born out of. Watching what the school did and the school went through a very nice strategic planning process that they completed. And I actually have a proposal from somebody that I received a couple of weeks ago that I haven't had a chance to go through that. Is somebody who might be able to help us out with the with a strategic planning process and it would be great to take Envision. 2030 and and start turning it into a roadmap of of what we can do. And then as new things come up. We can make a decision about whether or not we want to take something off in lieu of putting something else on rather than just. Putting on.
That's great.
Thank you.
Very good.
Great. All right. Maybe we're done.
Maybe we're done.
Okay.
Move to a chart.
So so I suggest that we take a look at what Shannon's drafted at our next meeting and adopt it.
Okay. Good.
You know, review it and amend it, whatever, and adopt it.
All right, so and just. Give me some of the timelines so I know where to put what.
On the agenda?
Yeah.
Yeah. Very good.
Great. Great.
Thank you, everybody.
We need, we need.
Okay, and I have a question. When are we planning to do the Town Manager Evaluation?
I think that's next. That's the next meet, our next meeting.
Ooh, big meeting.
So does that have. Town manager goals for the following year, for this upcoming year as part of that evaluation? And are are they tied into these Select Board goals or like how is this all going to work?
There's this form, right?
Right.
We have this form and that's what we're doing.
Right. So on that form, we didn't have a specific thing about setting goals for next, for the upcoming year.
For the Town Manager, you mean?
Right.
Shouldn't we, aren't you going to do that, Carrie? Set goals based on our goals, informed by our goals, but also they're your goals?
I I think they're they're two different things.
Yeah.
Though they're related.
Yes.
So last year I was asked to put together goals in addition to Select Board goals. I have, I I haven't done that formally for Fiscal 24. Although we have all of our department goals established and I have some leftover goals from 23 and and maybe a few other things. And I can put that together. I'm not, I'm not sure. For the 26, for the meeting on the 24th because you'll, Henry will want that tomorrow.
We need it.
I don't have that.
Okay, so that's not going to, that's going to be separate from the evaluation. I guess that was my question.
Right, but I think I think it it follows on. So the evaluation is is a retrospective look. And the 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 goals would be a prospective look. I think you've heard our discussion. I I for one would be interested in seeing the department goals. So if you would be comfortable circulating that, that would be. That would be helpful and then and and a draft set of goals of your own that we might be able to give you some feedback on.
So the the department goals are all now, they're included in the budget book. But they they are sort of a mixture of goals and tasks.
Sure.
And I would clean that up for what I was going to present to you, I think, at the end of August. But for, if you want to get a sneak peek, you can you can look and see what's in the budget book.
Okay.
Okay.
Are you good, Terry?
Did that give you what you need?
Um, okay, so you're saying the end of August is when we will have the department goals and the Town Manager goals. That are based partly on the budget book and partly on our discussion and.
I I think if you're just talking about goals, I think we can move that up in in August. I I don't think. That I can have it for the for the 24th, but if you wanted to do that earlier in August, I think that's fine. I think when we were talking about the beginning of September, you were talking about more budget and.
Right, ARPA and budget. Yeah, I think I think that would be good. So after we establish the Select Board goals next meeting. Then you can use that and the department goals to come in. That would work really well.
So again, just clarifying the timeframes, the budget book, which is already published for FY24, represents what the departments are doing. And Carrie is saying we can always go back and look at that. And so when we're talking about goals. For September, we're talking about the goals that they might be putting in place for FY25 and beyond. So we're, yeah. Because we're we're in 24 is baked.
Yes.
It's happening already. So we're looking at, we're looking at the next cycle already. So we're 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 closing out 23. We're working on 20, we're in 24 and and we're we're planning 25.
Yeah.
I think you want to, you want to have a discussion about sort of what the work plan is for 24.
Yeah, that's what we want. Okay, but yeah, right after that, we already have to start out.
Already in there.
One thing at a time, right?
Well, and that's why a strategic planning session in the fall would be really helpful so we can bake that into the Fiscal 25.
Yeah.
Okay.
Twelve.
Motion to a turn, right? Thank you.
Second.
Second, yeah.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye, thank you, everyone.
Mr. Howell.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Let's stick around.
And myself, Mary Hartman, aye.
Aye, my pleasure.
Hi, very good.